Thank you. Now, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the February 15th, 2022 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Would you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible,
We're going to go into an executive session. Jason, can you read that?
I can. We're going to go into executive session according to MGL, G, yeah, MGL, Chapter 30A, 21A, 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel or the fire chief.
Okay. We'll need a roll call vote to go into executive session. Bill?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, yes. Three in favor, two absent. We'll reconvene as soon as we get done executive session. Go in the other room.
No, it's all right. It still matters at 3.6, and they have three members at 1.0.
Thank you for being patient. We'll be right back to regular business. Public comment, Jan Dempsey had got.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jan Dempsey, 33 Uptown Road, and Library Trustee. I just wanted to mention to you and the public, do you want to go?
Oh, thank you. Darcy Lepore, our library director, and I attended a wonderful program that was put on by the Topsfield Library, and it was all about recycling and trash and how to reduce it, and it was put on by Keep Massachusetts Beautiful. It was a phenomenal program. It was interactive. It was informative, and we were so pleased with it that we decided to have them come and do it for the Groveland Library.
Wait, 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 wait.
Hang on a second.
Okay. It's going to take place Wednesday, that's next week, on the 23rd at 7:00 PM, and it's a virtual program, so you do have to register on the library website at LangleyAdamsLib.org so that you can get the email with the Zoom link. But this is the description of it. Are you confused about what goes in your trash bin and what goes in your recycling bin? You're not alone. Attend Keep Massachusetts Beautiful's Talking Trash and Recycling presentation via Zoom on Wednesday, February 23rd, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, to learn what really happens to your trash and recyclables here in Groveland. We'll also discuss the plastic pollution crisis and how we manage trash and recycling in Groveland and across Massachusetts. You'll learn ways to reduce the amount of trash you generate, improve your recycling habits, and make easy changes to lead a more sustainable lifestyle. You'll also get an overview of MassDEP's innovative Recycle Smart MA website. This interactive program is delivered in 45 minutes with 15 to 30 additional minutes for questions and answers at the end. And again, please preregister at LangleyAdamsLib.org or call the library with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask you a follow-up question? Is it possible that we could record this as well as, so that it could be, I mean, it's virtual, right? So they would have their presentation and that could...
I think that they have an archived one as well, but I'll check with Darcy on that.
That would be great to, after that happens, to let it then be put out. Look at, he's nodding his head. Thank you.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, to let it be aired on the public television.
Okay. I'll check with her and see how it works with them.
Yeah, see if it's open for that.
Okay.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for the time.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jan. Approval of warrants. Jason, do you have them?
Yes, yes, I do. I'll make a motion to approve payroll warrant, which...
I'm going to go read it.
In the amount of $187,751.49.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I'll make a motion to approve bill warrant 2233, and the amount of $617,482.51, which breaks down to town bills $370,807.19. Payroll withholding $27,173.90. Transfer in of $252,167. Transfer outs $240,167. And transfer out in special line item $12,000. Grants $25,721.61. Water and sewer $61,734.19. And light department $132,045.62.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Approval of the minutes, January 31st, 2022, meeting minutes. Anybody read those? Does it look to be in order?
I think I did.
Yes, and I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for Monday, January 31st, 2022.
Oh, you are up.
Oh, you can't.
You cannot. I can do it. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of Monday, January 31st, 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one abstention. Thank you. Appointments. Appointment of Gianna Peralisi, 1 Ann Street, Groveland, to the position of library page at Langley Adams Library, effective February 22nd. Part-time position, five to nine hours per week. What's listed at $13.50 an hour is not the minimum wage, so that needs to be at 14 and a quarter.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Yes, it's a second. Make a motion to appoint Gianna Peralisi for the position of library page at Langley Adams Library at a rate of 14 and, what was the amount? Excuse me?
14 and 25.
$14.25 per hour, an average of five to nine hours per week, starting, when?
February 22nd.
Effective February 22nd, 2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
A second, and we have a recommendation from the library director for appointment. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Discussion and possible vote. Town administrative bank access approval. We can table that. That's been resolved. Motion to table?
Oh, motion to table.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Three in favor, oppose. One bill.
Yeah, it's a moot point, so.
Four in favor, one oppose. Release of overlay surplus. And we have a letter from Julie, the assessing manager. Board of Selectmen has agreed to release $15,000 from our overlay surplus. I think it has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. She states, at least last year it did, but we had no town administrator, so I'm not Just, I can't make that out. If you need me to do anything.
Let me know, LMK. Let me know. She's putting LMK. It's like abbreviated, that's all. It took me a minute. So is this all they're planning to free up towards the revenues, 15,000?
And even that's a stretch.
Really? So the overlay is hurting. Interesting. Well, of course, we'll accept it, but I don't think we have to do anything more than just vote to accept it?
It is a formalized vote because I had requested that they release it.
Okay.
The Board of Assessors had agreed and voted to release the $15,000 because that's under their authority.
Yes, it is.
And it's just a formality for the board to accept.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept $15,000 from the overlay surplus as voted by the Board of Assessors.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Review and approve sending the drafted special act eliminating the Department of Finance and Budget to the town of Groveland, in the town of Groveland, to the state delegation for official action. Now, we have a copy of that.
It's just one page, huh? Why did it take so long?
Yep.
Yeah, a motion. We approve sending the drafted special act eliminating the Department of Finance and Budget in the town of Groveland to the state legislature delegation for official action.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Rebecca, you're going to, you'll take care of that. Thank you. Review request for a street light to be added at 135 Seven Star Road. We have a request from the resident, Frank O'Connell, and he indicates that the light department has been spoken to and will take care of it upon approval. And a motion? Streetlight 135 Seven Star Road. And I went out there, and it is dark out there at night. It would be to the benefit to have one there.
Make a motion to request a street light at the front of 135 Seven Star Road on pole number 60, based on the chairman's visit to it? I don't really know where that is.
I'll second that.
Pole number 60.
Yeah.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to get either police or fire in assessment. Is that the most optimal place to put that light? Is there a better place in that area to put a light? You know, just want to make sure that this is going to be the best. It might be best for Mr. O'Donnell, but is it best for the street at large? Might it be best to put it on the pole a little further up, a little further down? Or is that the best, most optimal place for the light? I don't know. I didn't go down the street, and I'm not sure if I would note pole 60 if I ran into it.
Oh, you'd know it if you ran into it.
Well, it does say there used to be one.
It is a dark area out there, and Kevin Snow from the light department indicates in the 22-watt LED street light would be the best option.
Did you want to make a friendly amendment and have that one, either the police chief or the fire chief, just...
Just corroborate that that was, that would be the best place for it? Yeah, that, I appreciate that.
I'd accept the friendly amendment.
You want to read, is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. You want to read the motion with the friendly amendment?
Right. The initial motion was to approve the electric department to put a street light at 135 Seven Star Road on pole number 60, contingent on, do you want one chief or two chiefs? How many chiefs do you want?
Yeah, I trust either one's opinion. I mean, just make sure it's at night.
Contingent on public safety, agreeing that is the best location.
Listen, you know, even if it's a patrol officer that's used to going up and down that street at night, I mean, that's good enough for me. Because they're probably...
Contingent on the approval from public safety.
I still second it.
Okay, there we go.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve and sign the common vic license renewal for Jeff and Maria's Ice Cream, 918 Salem Street.
I'll make a motion to approve the, it's a vic license for Maria and Jeff's Ice Cream? Right? I don't have it here.
Yep.
I have John Osborne's thing next. I don't know why. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor?
I didn't see any, I didn't see any paperwork at all. Was there any paperwork with this? Usually there is.
Well, I have paperwork. I didn't know if it got submitted.
Oh, everything's all...
I checked the workers' compensation form, and the fee was submitted, and the application was filled out. I can leave it right with the license.
No, she gets it all done.
I trust you. Just wanted to verify.
Right. We're not used to having it all done that way so efficiently. Thank you. Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Accept the resignation of FJ Osborne from the Groveland, from the Government Study Committee. And we have a letter of resignation from Dr. Osborne.
Make the motion to accept with regret the resignation of Dr. Osborne from the Government Study Committee. And note, for those people that are watching, that John Osborne has served in this town, he says, continuous, I believe him, for 50 years of continuous service to this town. He's been on various boards and commissions, including the Water and Sewer, the Government Study.
Capital Improvement.
Capital Improvement.
Agno Expansion.
Keep going. Yep. The Senior Center, I mean, just numerous projects, always, always willing to lend a hand, and his contributions stand for themselves, and his participation will be missed. Make a motion to accept it.
Motion and a second. Jason, any further discussion?
We shouldn't, we shouldn't let him go down. He's that good. I agree.
He is good.
Yeah, so, I can't, I can't go. I can't support this.
He's going to stay...
Another 10 years.
He's going to give a technical advice to the Government Study Committee. That's what I'm told behind the scenes. Yeah. You talk to him about that.
He can stick around if he know what he has.
All in favor? Oppose? Four in favor, one oppose.
I'm not for letting good people go. I respect his decision.
46 Washington Street, update on potential lease. Mike Dempsey. Mike, you're up.
Mr. Chair, Mike Dempsey. Mr. Chair, I request that you postpone this update perhaps to your next meeting. There's a few last issues that we need to take care of before we're ready for executing a lease.
Motion to table the discussion and possible vote on 46 Washington Street, update on potential lease.
Second.
Motion and a second to table. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
American Rescue Plan Act Funding Project Review. And this was brought up at the last meeting, and we put it on again. More clarification?
And at the request of the board, Mr. Chair, I did remove some of the projects and look at alternatives, and we actually, based upon the request, now have a little money left over from the allocation, based on those requests.
For summer barbecue, I see.
Actually, we, we got like two years to spend this money, and we've approved a couple of items here already. Anybody got any comments?
I like the tabs on this sheet. This is phenomenal.
Oh, you like that, huh?
I do. It's fun.
Check out the formulas.
Dan...
The best part, it's completely interactive. You change...
Yeah. One, and it goes through all the others? Yeah?
Yeah, if you were to change, I don't know what tab you're in.
I'm in the first one now.
PD 310 to 615?
PD org data. That's the beginning one I have, and then the next one is the 615 one. Well, yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Who's, who's, who's running? You?
Yep.
Ah, neat. I love it.
Mind if I run it?
Yeah, yeah, no. I prefer.
So Selectmen McDonald should know that I did say, what is Daniel McDonald doing on the list?
Yeah, and actually...
You're on the list.
What list?
No list. I'm not showing you any names.
What, for money?
Ah.
I want a company car with a blue plate.
She's taking away my Star Trek one.
What am I on the list for?
Nice positioning. I'll try and speak into the mic better.
Basically, what you're looking at, Rebecca and I developed a simple model to try and make this fair and equitable and take out all the garbage that kind of goes along with some of these things. So if you look at this particular...
I'm looking for, which tab, which tab are you on again?
I am on PD 310 to 615.
Okay, and we just move over. I got it.
Yeah, you can see the bottom.
I got it. Yeah.
So if you were to click on that, on that cell, what this does, what this shows is, basically...
Oh, I get it.
It's saying, look at this cell and tell me how many hours.
Yep.
And then, based on a five split, okay, if we tiered it up five different ways, then look at this number, look at this chart, determine where this number falls in that chart, and then return the value in this cell here.
Yep, I get it.
Very simplistic.
Yeah.
If we did it on a four-way, it would work the same exact way. So if I escape out of here, move over one, and, see, that's two, yep.
Okay.
So it just changes to a different set of data.
Okay.
The model doesn't care who you are. It just basically cares about two numbers. The number of hours in column B.
Yep.
And cell C6, which is the bonus. Right now, it's plugged in at 2,000.
Okay.
You can make it any one you want. You change those two numbers, everything will change.
Okay.
Talking with the fire and fire chief and patrolman Sanborn, Rebecca and I, Monday night, they seem to prefer a four-tier system. So basically, how it works is you take the minimum, you take the maximum number of hours, and the minimum number of hours. So that would be 2,280 and zero.
Yep.
Then, basically, if it's divided four ways, which this would be, so for every 570 hours, you'll move up another group.
Okay.
So five, 0 to 570, you get something.
Yep.
At 571 to 1140, you kick up another level, so on and so forth.
Okay.
Again, very simplistic. So I did it a bunch of ways, based on the meeting we had here two weeks ago. The first way I present the data is March 10th through June 15th. Then, in the full PD. Did the same with the Fire Department. It's 310 to 615, or the full year. Basic things I think we have to decide is what's going to be in cell C6? And do we go with the 310 to 615, which is the original dates of the emergency, correct? Or do we go with the full? It's really, you know, or do we decide they don't deserve anything at all, which I think they do? Just as this board decision, how do we do, you have the money. So if you'd like to see a different number up there, or you'd like to see the totals, we can do anything you want, because this is totally interactive, and it'll give you back results in real time. So, uh, let's see. If we scroll down, you can see that's where you would be for the police. So at, um, split five ways, it'd be $36,000, and it would come out to about 99 cents an hour. Split four ways, oh, $500 difference, exactly $500 difference, and it'd be a dollar one. If we were to go to the full, and I should have blocked this out.
Can you just white them out?
Yeah.
With the font and just make it white. Then they'll still be there.
That's what I did on Heather thing, believe it or not. Oh, come on.
42, 36, 100. Or you could hide the column. Hide the column.
We did full. Not a lot of difference, because, again, you're still dealing with the same top dollar amount, the $2,000.
Oh, you mean when you extend it out over the other, the remaining months?
You're right, and that's why the per-dollar value decreases from the 90 or the dollar one down to the 66.
Well, I would expect that with the police department, because they work a more consistent schedule, but what does it look like when you go to the fire department, look at the two periods?
Glad you asked.
Thank you.
So in the fire department, uh, this is what it would look like. You'd have the same basic scenario. Split four ways. Five ways, it'd be a dollar 43 or a dollar 67, split four. Again, these are using the same numbers and, basically, with the same rationale. That we're just plugging numbers into column B, which is the total number of hours from March 10th to June 15th, and it's queued on that, and cell D6, which is the 2,000. Change any of those two numbers, all the values change. Again, speaking with the fire chief, Rebecca, I think you can corroborate this, they prefer the four-tier method as opposed to the five-tier method. Some guys gain a little, some guys lose a little. It's all pretty much even in the end.
What about the time period?
Time period?
Do they have any preferences?
Well, of course. They want to go the full 23. They want to go the full 23. But again, without increasing the top number there in cell D6 to 2,000.
Yep.
It only dilutes the per-hour.
Rate.
Rate. It doesn't change anything else, really.
Interesting, yeah.
The bonuses will still be comparable. It just dilutes the hourly rate, because now you're spreading over the same amount of dollars over greater hours.
Yeah.
Bill, well, what if you use the same hourly rate and just spread it out? How much more would the total payout be?
What do you mean? Give me an example.
Well, don't dilute the, don't dilute the hourly. Just go with the top hourly and spread it out over, what is it, 20, how many weeks?
23.
23.
23 months.
23 months, yeah. That's what I meant.
So I'm still not understanding.
The high watermark is what, a dollar something an hour?
No, 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 no. The high watermark is 2,000.
Well, you.
You don't go beyond that, no matter what.
It breaks down, what it breaks down to is an hourly, you know, mathematically, if I'm going to give you $1,000 for 2,000 hours worked, I'm giving you an extra 50 cents an hour, right? So that's what that is. It's just an hourly computation, computation of what it would look like if you put it into the first initial period, which was March 10th to June 15th, or whether you expand it for the entire 23 months.
I understand.
It dilutes the hourly, because you're still dealing with the same dollar bonus. You're just spreading it over more hours. So of course, you're going to get a smaller one.
So is it, that's payout, six or one half dozen the other. It's just, it might, it casts a wider net and you might grab more employees, but you might water down the ones that worked in the first part of the pandemic.
No, because the ones that fought the first part of the pandemic typically still have the most hours statistically. So they'll still achieve the highest bonuses. To your point, the wider, you know.
Than that.
Yeah, the set, which we're looking at, 23 months, will catch some of the people that came on later.
Yeah.
But again, they won't attain the hours that the people initially had. They'll get something, but they won't be near as, you know, they'll get 500, for example in this case. But if you work 0 to 353 hours, right? But if you work 354 to 706, you get 1,000.
They'll just get less because they.
They put in less hours.
Those are the facts.
But this is all based on hours. Doesn't care who you are, doesn't care what you did. It just says, give me a number of hours, and I'm going to give you back a value.
Okay. So let me ask you this, that I'm trying to drive at, okay? If you go with the whole set, as you call it, 23 months.
Yep.
I think the chief came in here and he, no, the, strike that, the union rep, I forget his name, forgive me.
Detective.
Did he say there was an average within the area? What was the average kind of going rate? Was there a number there?
He, yeah, we discussed that. He was about a dollar 25 an hour.
So let me ask you this, just for the sake of illustration, and I'm not saying this is where we're going to land. The dust will settle. But if you gave the 125 for the whole 23-month period, would the payout be astronomically higher or just marginally?
Easy to find out.
Because pardon me, let's just say it's another couple grand, then I'd like to go with, if that's the going rate, a buck 25, I'd like to give him a buck 25.
Well, here's the thing.
I don't want to water it down to a dollar four. I mean, it's just, it's, it's not even nickels and dimes, it's pennies at this point.
Oh, then you'll bump up, you'll bump up the average for the police and you'll bump down the average for the fire. But it's an easy calculation.
Because the fire is based on calls, not hours, is that why?
Yeah.
Is that?
No, it's hours.
All right.
So.
But it's call hours.
For example, this would be, um, what's that? Well, I just, it's a general discussion point. I'm not asking you to crunch numbers, Bill. I mean, if it's easy enough to do, but I just.
You know why I like staying with the.
Let me ask you this, too.
Take the 12, 902.
I'm just trying to get it, I'm just trying to get information. What's the going rate on the firemen in this area? We can't compare apples to apples, because we have an on-call department. I mean, so what are the problems with going with, what are they doing in Essex County? And I don't always like to be a copycat, don't get me wrong, but I just, you know, I'm just asking you.
That's a good question.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, that's a good question. And you know what? I, um, I think that'd be a great thing for you to find out for us.
I could ask the chief. I don't know. I don't know who I'm going to call, just, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know if he has that data.
I don't know. I wasn't, I didn't care about who has what, who's giving out what.
Yeah.
What anybody else can afford.
Well.
All I was concerned about was putting together a model.
Okay.
That was fair.
No, I'm not.
That took all the kind of garbage out and just gave us two things to determine.
And that's.
A, whether we're going to do it.
Yeah.
B, what was the, what was the max we were going to give? Everything else is based on a calculation.
Yeah.
All right, one more, one more issue, okay? Did the, the representative of the fire department and the, and the police department, they, they picked, they had a preference, and they were okay with?
They preferred four-tier.
They saw this?
Rebecca and I met with them Monday night. I sat with each one of them for 45 minutes.
Yeah.
To explain exactly how it worked.
And they'd be happy with that scenario, the four, I think you said.
The four-tier.
They were more inclined to go with the, you know, break it up four ways as opposed to five.
Yep.
Both police and fire wanted that.
That was.
If they had to choose, they would want it that way.
If they had to choose, they would rather have it broken in four steps as opposed to five steps.
Well.
That was my understanding from both sides.
I mean, I don't, I won't go against that, if that's what they want. If they think that's the fairest, I think they're closest to the, you know, the issue that I have. I just, you know, I've never been on a.
Difference in dollars really.
I've never been on a fire call.
Minuscule.
I've never been on a fire call. I don't know what's involved. You know, if they think that's the fairest way, I don't have any objections.
They thought it was, it was extraordinarily fair, because it doesn't take into consideration anything but a number.
Okay.
How else, how fair can you be? Give me a number.
So let me ask you this, Bill. Why would we choose any of the other options, then?
Well, because they brought it to us.
Yeah.
And to make sure that they knew that, I'd look at it any way they wanted to slice this pie, I went the extra mile, did a couple of extra tabs, and showed them what the difference would be between the initial period and the full 23 that they had kind of, you know, had in their, in their, in their head.
So it made the abstract concrete. It showed them the numbers and what it would look like, and they said, yeah, that's, that's the obvious choice.
Right. Now, the obvious choice, the not obvious choice is the cell D6, the 2,000.
Okay.
That's what we have to decide. They liked the way it's broken out.
Yeah.
They liked how it splits the four ways. They liked that it's all determined based on a number, not on a person. But we have to decide the top number, because that changes everything.
How much?
Right.
The bottom line.
Doesn't everybody want to know that?
The top line.
It's all about cash, man.
Well, to me, this is a priority.
I think so, too.
And I don't want to delay this. We can wait on some of the other things. We've got two years, but I don't want to have them wait two years for this. I mean.
I think that's completely unreasonable, given the circumstances that they put themselves into.
So, so what would stop us from saying yes to this tonight?
Nothing would stop me.
Nothing.
I'll go along with you, Bill.
I like putting it into the declaration period, because then that gives a definitive beginning and end period. It doesn't seem to change the numbers, right?
It only.
Because you keep rolling the months forward, you keep on 22 months, 23, 24. Where do you pick a number?
It'll, it'll, it'll change, it'll change, because some people accumulate greater hours over 23 months than they did, you know, over the first space. Does it change their, their outcome a lot? Not really.
Not much, yeah. Right.
I think Rebecca and I went over all the people that it would, you know, up or down. There weren't a lot of differences, you know?
Well, that's would be my preference. I'm not, you know, dug in on it. Just thought, because during that time period, that's when we let other departments go to working part days a week. And you were on the board with me and Ed. And we did accommodate them during this by saying to the highway and the water, so they were rotating, working only two, three days a week, because we couldn't take a chance on them all getting sick at once. So we tie into all of the measures that we took, and we closed the town hall, we closed the library. That's why, I mean, to me, it's just, I'll go either which way the board wants to go, but that would be my preference, to tie it to something that had a definite beginning and end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Either way, I mean.
Either way, you did.
You think about it.
Thank you for the work. It's great.
The max, you know, just as fire department, we're looking at it, March 10th to June 15th. So the max total of hours is 1412. But if we.
Yeah.
Uh.
Go full 23.
We go up here.
Yeah.
The max, uh, should change. No, it's still, it's still that. It works.
Okay.
The only dilution is really the, um, the rate per hour.
Yeah. I mean, I think what you and Rebecca have done is really great work. And as I said to the firefighters and the police officers here, there's, there's no really amount of money we could ever say would be compensation for working under those conditions, but a recognition by the town and some to recognize it would be good. I think it would, it'd be good.
Yeah, I don't think you can reasonably put a dollar amount on what they sacrificed during that time period.
Correct.
I, you know, what's a life worth?
A lot.
But it's, I think it's the least we could do to show our gratitude for what they did during these, those times. And.
And this fits in with some of the other projects that we may want to fund as well, right? Which is important, because that, that money is also going to be a savings to the taxpayers in the, in the long run. So do we want to vote on this, or do you want to think on it and vote at the next meeting?
Well.
What do you think?
What's your pleasure?
I don't know.
Why did, why did they only ask for 50?
Rebecca, do you think that we've done everything?
Jason, what's your pleasure? Any ideas?
Yeah, well, I have, um, one question. What do we cut? 284,000 dollars out of the original.
60, that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm driving at.
So originally.
What cuts were made to make it work?
Oh.
So originally, we had the sanitary sanitization methods that were in there. So we had the fogger, which was $30,000. We had the, um, the voting booth wand sanitizers, and based upon the conversation from the board of selectmen, we didn't want to spend those monies on one-time measures that we wouldn't necessarily be using all the time and wouldn't get the most benefit from.
Correct, yeah.
So I removed those. I removed $10,000 from the economic development business loan program. We removed some monies from the sewer project. We removed the sign board from, that we were doing for the message board for outside, because we found some other monies that we had available through the municipal allocation. So little things, little tweaks like that were made in order to accommodate that additional monies.
Well, that was a tremendous amount of work.
Considerate, thoughtful work, too. I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. If, if the departments are satisfied, and, and I think we should vote it.
I mean.
And so we can move on and.
We met with them separately, and they seemed to be very receptive and very appreciative of trying to make this fair and equitable.
Right. I mean, we could vote that, or we could open the whole thing up to public comment, if we have the list of what we think we're maybe going to do. But I go with, I thought we'd take care of this first.
Well, if we, if we prefer this, we need a, we need a motion, and we can get it done tonight.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan Act as submitted to the board tonight.
Oh, that whole.
For public safety.
Just for public safety.
Just the, um.
Damn it.
Public safety, Jason.
The whole thing?
Public safety.
We got to pass it and read it later? Come on.
I've already read it.
We've been, we've been working on this for quite some time, and there's a lot of things that need to get done.
So you want the, you want the whole ball of wax, right away?
I'm good with it. No reason to wait.
Motion on the floor for the whole.
The whole 2 million?
ARPA, uh, as presented. Is there a second?
No.
No second, motion fails. There another motion?
Police only?
Police and, uh, public safety only.
What was the, what are we calling this, this spreadsheet? Give it a name.
Um, what did I call it? I called it the ARP bonus schedule, American Rescue Plan Bonus Schedule.
Groveland First Responders, number five. Okay. Want to make a motion?
Well, I wasn't clear on what the total dollar amount was. Do we have to?
It appears to be if we, if we adopt the four-tier principle and we go with the six, the 310 to 615, it looks like the total will be 58,000.
I'll go along with that. You want to make a motion?
My spreadsheet, I don't feel all right making a motion. You make the motion, I'll second it.
All right, I just want to get the verbiage right on the, on the jargon. I'll label it as I make a motion to, uh, accept the Groveland First Responders Premium Pay.
That's the words.
As presented.
As presented in a spreadsheet before the town tonight by Selectman O'Neill. I think it was scenario four.
Four-tier.
And the dates were 310 to 61.
615.
615. And approximate appropriation was?
58,000.
$58,000. Okay, motion or a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? None. Are we ready to take a vote? No discussion, motion and a second. 58,000 for public safety, uh, under the American Rescue Plan Act. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Great job. Thank, uh, thank the police and fire, don't thank me. I just do this at my table. I'm not the one out there in the streets every day. There's the guys, they're the real heroes.
I thank them, too. Appreciate it. We want to discuss any of the others, or again, put this on the agenda for the next meeting and?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Some of these, um, wouldn't it be wise? I mean, some of them can wait. I mean, some of it, like the carb work and some of the construction might wait for better weather, but I mean, if we have time, shouldn't we get some, uh? Public feedback? Well, not only public feedback, but maybe put them out for bid. I mean, one of the jobs, I think it was like a quarter of a million dollars to do some roadwork over there next to the police department and River Pines Drive Construction. I'd like to see what's involved in that. I mean, I'm just a layperson on roads, but you know what? It doesn't look that bad to me. I mean, what are you gonna do for $240,000?
It was the sidewalk and, and.
It's not what it costs for a sidewalk.
Better weather to take a look at it because it doesn't seem like 240,000 is a little high.
And can we do that in-house versus putting it out to bid? I mean, can the highway department do the pavement on that and save us some money? So I think we should discuss how we can knock that number down. It's a big number. No? Here's the trouble I have with giving everything to the highway department. They have such limited bandwidth. Yeah. That to just keep stacking things on their plate. Well, I don't want to force it on, but if they say, we'll take the job, then fine. If they say we don't want it, then I. Well, they're always gonna take the job because it means overtime, it means extra. But, you know, what is the true cost? Like the, like the bathrooms? What is it, what was the true cost of the bathrooms? We never really know because it's kind of hidden.
I think the biggest thing that drives up the cost is replacing the concrete curbs with granite, which means the street has to come up because you have to be able to lock it in. So it's not just the sidewalk.
I understand, I gotta strip it back. Uh, well, can you do that on a state road?
That's not a state road.
That's a private road. They're talking just up our driveway here.
Oh, just up our driveway?
Just that, they're not the main street at all.
By driveway, 250?
Yeah, yes.
All the way to the gate? You think that's cheap? I'll do it for 200, me and you. You and I will go.
I'm wondering, I mean, other, I've read a lot of towns that are getting, putting, you know, explaining this to the public. I kind of feel like it's not a survey thing you can do, but what if we tried to make an attempt to do a write-up of where we are right now, what we've approved so far and what we're looking at and like once a month, we open, you know, we allow for people if they want to comment to us on any of these things and we try attacking these a few at a time, you know? What do you think of that?
With the way things continue to increase in price.
But we're not gonna do them all at once, right?
Yeah, I mean, the machines are gonna go up. I mean, I don't know what that multi-jobs is gonna cost.
The materials have been going up drastically as it is.
Okay, but I'm not talking about dragging out two years. I'm just talking about at least explaining to the public what we're doing, where we are now and allowing, if people do have anything that they, that they want to say, let us, let's hear it.
So that will impact the budget slightly just because the two ones, number six and seven, the mower and the swap loader, those are on our capital projects.
So we want to approve those before town meeting?
To be considered for funding.
Yep.
So there's, I mean, I guess we can.
So those are priorities.
Just something to consider that they are on their capital plan for this year's budget.
The 10-ton swap loader, multipurpose truck on the mower.
And then the other two I'll bring to your attention is that the Patriot server, like we mentioned in the assessor's office, the, one of the hard drives failed, so now we're lost on our last one. If that one goes, we will lose some very valuable data. And the other one being the migration to Microsoft Office 365. There was another hack into the system, so we are patching the system, but we're only becoming more and more vulnerable to these attacks and these patches are soon to go to, there's not gonna exist anymore because Microsoft is pushing everyone to the cloud. So those are some of the more timely ones that I would like to bring to the board's attention when making a determination.
Can I ask a question about the Patriot server? I've never, I've never understood, we contract out to Patriot properties. Is this Patriot server tied to Patriot properties or is this a whole nother thing?
This is our server.
But it's called Patriot server?
Yep, because it's part of their program. So they have the software that runs on a server that has a specific set where they can do like, it's not aerial imagery, but it's some type of imagery that captures the assessment data and helps provide, the software itself provides the calculation for the assessment of the properties, but that sits on a separate server. And so the server is what's causing the issue. It's not necessarily the Patriot software, but the server is so old and so outdated that the software is not able to run.
Okay, so we contract with Patriot properties, but we also contract separately with another. So we split up our assessments. Now, what is Patriot assessing us, doing for us?
Patriot's just the software and then we have a contract with a gentleman that helps with the valuation and doing the inspections.
So that's the other company?
That's different. That's a separate contract. So Patriot provides the software and then that gentleman provides the valuation and the inspections, that helps the assessing manager, and the server is where all of the assessment data sits.
Okay, because Meramec, I know a couple of years ago, signed a five-year contract with Patriot properties for everything. And that's when I started to wonder, why do we have two contracts? So do you have recommendations on this idea? Do, do we want another server or do we want to change our contracts?
So we could either do a server or we can go to the cloud for, for the Patriot, for storing the assessing data because the assessing data is stored separately.
Okay. Well, the cloud sounds like a better deal than something that's gonna break.
It would be more expensive.
It is, huh?
Yep. I have to get the figures, but I know in the initial conversation, it was going to be more expensive.
So these, each of these contracts is just under 10,000, right?
What is under 10,000?
These, these contracts that we have in the assessing department for these different things.
I haven't compared the cost.
Okay, because I think like we just go with it every single year. I've never seen them bid or anything.
And this isn't a contract. This is for a piece of equipment.
I know, I know, I get that. But we're buying a piece of equipment because of a contract we have.
Because of the software we use. And Patriot is kind of like one of the only companies that is around that does the, that has the software for assessing data. Almost every other community uses it. I don't think I even know another community that, that doesn't use Patriot.
And they, they all have their own servers or do they use?
They either have the Patriot, they either have a server to run the program on or they have the cloud or they use the cloud.
Okay. And you're recommending we stay with the server?
It was just one of the cheaper options for the time being and it'll get us a, a good 10 years or so.
Oh, 10 years, okay. All right, thank you.
Dan, go ahead.
I'll make a motion, if I may.
Make a motion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to appropriate American Rescue Plan funding for the purchase of Grove Land Town technology upgrades and improvements. Delivered as website, $19,737. Patriot server upgrade, $8,630. And Microsoft Exchange migration for $23,375.
Here's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Anybody? None? All in favor?
So the total is not to exceed 51,837 or that's? That's the sum of the three? Is that a hard number? Well, I, I didn't, I didn't see the bids on it, but to me, it's like, you know, can we have wiggle room on this? Listen, it, I, I agree, it's critical infrastructure need. Yeah, so. I just want to make, I don't know if these are hard numbers or if these are soft or. Who put them together?
So those were, those were hard numbers. I pulled quotes for the website and got three separate quotes. That was the lowest quote. And then I also pulled, had the, talked with BSS who currently provides our services for technology support and they provided the quote for the Patriot server. And then I've been talking to three other technology companies for the quote for the Microsoft migration. And that one was the one that was, might be a little under, but they just weren't sure with the amount of mailboxes and workstations that they'd have to connect to.
Or licenses, right?
Exactly.
So you don't need any wiggle room of a thousand bucks even? You can make this happen for these numbers or less?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So.
Yes.
Jason, you had a comment?
No, I just seconded it.
Motion and a, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None, all in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
You go ahead.
Could I ask you a question? Listen to what Jason said and, you know, I don't have the crystal ball, but I think we're in a hyperinflationary period and maybe time isn't on our side. Whereas I voted against, you know, approving everything, maybe there's a, you know, a Plan B on that, Jason, I don't know if this would satisfy. Would there be harm if we put these other proposals out for bid as soon as possible and see what we get back for numbers and then make a decision on them? Because ultimately, I think we have to bid on these anyways. Is that true, Rebecca?
That is correct, for anything over 10.
And if we don't like what we get back, we don't have to purchase any of them, do we?
That's correct.
We're not bound to take the lowest one or the middle one. We don't have to do anything. We can say, forget about it.
Well, you have to take the lowest one, but you don't have to move forward if you don't want to move forward. You have that right.
If we buy it all, we have to take the lowest one and that seems right. Otherwise, it would be improper. And that wouldn't be what I would do. But if we just say we're not gonna do it, to that point, if we decided a year later, would that put us in the soup on that or is there a time lapse where it's like you're out of the woods on that? We rejected the lowest bid and then we changed our mind a year later and said, now we'll go forward it? Would we have to go back to that bid?
I think there's a time limit, but I'm not too sure.
There's gotta be a lapse period. But should we just vote on, on putting those out for bid and then?
I think it's an excellent idea.
You know, and that, that would not dilly-dally or delay anything and if we get the answers we like and that would still, in the process of putting them out to bid, I don't know how long it takes, we can still work on it and decide what we want to spend. And we can still, to Kathy's point, solicit some public comment on what they want us to do and, and we can run on two tracks, but we're still moving the ball on the, on the proposals. Does that make sense?
I have no problem with it.
You want to put that in the form of a motion?
I'll make, well, I guess the only one that wouldn't put out the bid would be the, the plant funding, right? So.
The what?
The, the, the.
Garden club.
Yeah, the garden club. I'm sorry.
The plant funding.
Nerdymen.
I got you.
So you want to do?
What do we need to put out the bid?
Six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 and 12.
Yeah, the big stuff that we can't do in-house.
And we can't do, we can't, but the one, the one caveat, though, when you were saying that is just that we, we can't go out to bid if we don't have the monies. So if we don't have, like, so we don't have the second half of the monies. They should be coming in in April.
Okay.
For the second portion of the allocation, but currently in, in our, like, that we currently have is not the full 2 million. So my only, my only hesitation is if we put all of them out, we would be breaking pro permit laws because we would not have the actual physical funds to purchase it, which is your legal requirement before.
Do you have the answer on what? Do we have the ability to put out for bid or you need time to crunch numbers?
I would need time to just double check what we could be, also came in under on, for the fire truck. So I would need a second to take a closer look at what we.
And that would restrict what we do on the other things. Would be tied up, at least in limbo for a period of time.
Yes.
At some point, could we rescind?
Rescind?
Yeah, if you put something out for bid and then we as a board say, you know what? We have a project that's more important than anything that came before us, kind of 11th hour, you know? Could we just, can, can you pull back a?
If it's not in the best interest of the community, you can definitely say that you are not moving forward with the project.
Yeah, you can pull it back or rescind it, I guess, you know? Just. What's the actual current funds we have?
It was with the 600,000 and minus the 6,000, it was 1,023 at the top of that spreadsheet. But the fire truck came in at 586,774 and I still don't believe we've expended the $6,000 for the test kits. I think the Board of Health is still working on that. So those monies are, have not been expended but allocated.
Rebecca, I just, I, I don't want to do any of that and make a mistake here. So if we put any of these out for bid, are we restricted in what we do?
I would prefer.
In the interim?
I would prefer that we get better quotes.
Okay.
So that we go out to different companies and get better figures before going out to bid and figure out exactly what you could.
So mechanically, how does that happen? You would do that or these departments or?
We could work with the departments to.
Whoever spearheaded these, that's in their initiative, let them run with that ball?
Yes.
And get back with some like photocopies of this, this is an estimate.
Instead of just emailing somebody and saying, what do you think it would cost for a new generator? They're like, oh, well, you do this and this and this. But they haven't been out to the site, they haven't really looked at it, they're not given specifications. So maybe it's more about getting more detailed specifications that would allow us to come up with a better price to go out to bid.
So that's pretty much, we're allowed to, you know, gather information and then you compare that to what you get on the, the public bid.
Yes.
To see if it's in line with the reality.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I get the idea that we want to get everything more knowledgeable, but I also think that we need to make a motion to close the warrant for the annual town meeting within this month. We typically do that and you wanted some of these items would impact the warrant. So should we vote those on our next meeting or, and then vote to close the warrant at our next meeting? Is that, is that timeline all right or not all right? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Because.
The next meeting is?
The 20.
The 28?
Yes, 28th.
And then you're saying close the warrant?
At that meeting. No, at, no, at that meeting. So we, yeah, I mean, we just usually, we vote in a meeting and we know more requests are gonna come in. I mean, by, you already sent the letters out, right? Everything's in.
Yep.
So I mean, we could vote to close the warrant tonight, too, couldn't we? That wouldn't, but I just want to make sure that anything that's on this list that might end up back on the warrant.
Well, I wouldn't close the warrant because we still have articles coming in that have not officially been submitted.
Oh, they, I thought they had a deadline, no?
What was that?
Didn't they have a deadline?
So we, we, the typical deadline for posting, I believe it's in early March. I can't recall the date off the top of my head.
Right, but we usually close the warrant in advance of that so that people don't just keep sending things in. I mean, there was a, you, I know you sent the letters out, they know.
And I believe it's the beginning of March is when we gave them the deadline.
Oh, okay, so we have to vote to close at that time?
We have a couple of zoning, a couple of general bylaw articles.
Yep. And then you have these things here.
And we also have to meet with the finance committee and go through the free cash allocations as well. There's other items that need to be finalized.
So you said the things on this list would impact your warrant?
They would if we were going to, so if, essentially, if the finance committee and Board of Selectmen had supported utilizing stabilization funds or free cash in the past for the expenditure and purchase of, of particular equipment, which they have, or they bonded a particular equipment purchase, those two equipment purchases are on there as well as the public safety, special boards request was also put on the capital request plan. So as to what the finance board and Board of Selectmen would like to put forward, no determination has been, had made. So they could say that they're not funding any capital projects like you did in FY21 where you didn't, or FY22, you didn't fund any capital project.
Well, because we were waiting for this money.
So that was my only thought process is that it will impact whether or not you decide to purchase it with free cash instead of using the ARPA funds. Or if you wait and say you're not using any capital funds this budget, at least then we're being transparent about the fact that you may put it on the capital plan, but you're not getting funded FY23 unless we decide to allocate ARPA funding.
But you've put these on the list because you feel these are legitimate and priority items. There's nothing on here that's just nonsense.
That's correct.
Okay, well, then I'm fine with it.
Jason, you had a question?
Yeah, and I think the special boards are very important because as stated in the last meeting, there's leaks over there and that's gonna make a lot more damage and a lot more cost in the long run. and a lot more cost in the long run. So the sooner we get on that, the sooner we get that taken care of, will be our savings in itself.
That perhaps is, uh, not something that's going to be worked on, uh, in the winter, we can wait, uh, wait a month.
Might as well get it lined up, I mean, it's, it's February now, by the time you get it lined up, it's April and it's well into the working season.
Yep. Before you know it.
Okay. Anybody else? I, I got a question, Rebecca, this, uh, on this sheet that you gave us tonight, uh, number seven was added. Was that one that was, uh, uh, originally going to be on the, on the warrant and move, and move to this?
That's correct, and my understanding, and one of the reasons it was added is because the finance committee and talking with the cemetery commission, um, I guess they were told that as part of the FY22 that they were going to be given a mower, and for some reason it was taken off at the last minute when there was a bunch of changes. So there was something that they were promised and they were going to try and buy in-house, but when the finance committee had realized that they actually did not receive the mower, they said it should be part of the, uh, ARPA funding because they should have already received it.
Okay, yeah, thank you, because that wasn't part of the original package.
It was not, it was added after the fact and because of the financial, uh, finance board request. In addition to obviously the cemetery commission.
But, uh, Dan, no, it was a while ago, did you make a motion to that effect for, uh, put these out the bid?
I think we need more clarity, so I'll withdraw that. I, I, you know, if we give them two weeks till the next meeting, I guess, and we need as much information as possible, and then I think we act at that point in time. I mean, uh, you know, I don't want to dilly-dally, things are rising in prices. So if we really need one of these things, we should, uh, you know? I mean, we could wait to do the sidewalks and the street within two years, but not much of a gambling man, but I'm, if I had to gamble, I'd say it's going to cost more a year from now.
I'd say it costs less two years from now.
It'll cost less two years from now? You think it's going to go down?
Listen, this, it's unsustainable right now. You, it, it has to be a correction, right?
Well, but.
When does the correction happen is the only, is the only question.
What I see is this, and I'm not Alan Greenspan or, you know? I don't know who was in there with cottage, Paul Volcker or something, but anyways, I mean, they print $4 trillion of paper and they keep increasing the money supply. They just watered down the dollar to 95 cents, 90 cents, 85 cents, so that can't correct. There's more money supply out there in circulation, so that is the definition of inflation, and that won't go down. Uh, they can't increase supply, which is part of inflation, sp- supply and demand. So if they can get the supply going, that can put pressure on, uh, prices and drop prices, so yes.
It can also raise interest rates and tighten the money supply.
And they should, but.
Okay, so Rebecca, you're going to get, uh, see what we have left?
We don't know.
Uh, we can only spend the 1,023,000 and see what we got left, and then we'll go to the next meeting and we can, uh, uh, look at some of these other items, see what we want to move forward. Jason, go ahead.
Well, that's all we can go out to bid for.
Right.
We can set everything up to be spent when the money gets available.
Yeah, but she said until we get the money in hand, we can't put it out to bid.
Until we get bids, I don't know that we want to vote on the projects, because, uh, what if the numbers are higher?
But then we can definitely do more due diligence.
Then it doesn't get done.
And then we can revote our vote.
Yeah.
Jason, I, that's just, pardon me for being tired tonight, but, uh, what's the downside of us waiting on doing what you want?
I think it just allows everything to go far too long. I mean, the truck itself, that's been in the works for over two years. Lawnmower, that's been in the works for over two years.
Can they buy those off the state bid list right now? They have that, that vehicle exist, that equipment, it's there? You know, just like that demo truck the fire department wanted? I mean, if they, I mean, they grab it, I mean, if there isn't another one, then you grab the one that's available, so is, is that available now?
That's what I'd like to figure out, is that.
Well, then maybe we need one more meeting and then we pull the trigger on this.
It's a mower and nobody's cutting grass anytime soon.
Yep.
You know, I don't know if they're going like hotcakes, I don't know.
But I think it's reasonable because what, worst case, we can figure out whether or not we do need to go out for bid for it. We can tell you we need to go vote for a bid for it, or we can have, uh, at least get more estimates so that we know what number we have is more final and that we feel confident with it moving forward.
Well, that's the information we should get in the next two weeks, so we'll make better decisions or as close as we can get to good decisions in two weeks. Because it's still the unknown, no matter what we do, it's a, we're guessing.
Okay, I think we, uh, pretty well clear on that. Next item, Kentucky Regional School Budget Review Presentation Given by Dr. Betholomew. I don't see him here, but maybe you, you, uh.
He wasn't supposed to attend, I just wanted to make sure that the board of selectmen were aware of the presentation that was recently, um, given to the school committee in regards to the budget being proposed, um, uh, by Penn Tucket and the increase and how, um, that increase far exceeds what we are capable of doing and puts the town, um, in a position where we will need to seek an override in order to accommodate, uh, what they are proposing. I know that the state aid from the school side, as well as the, the municipal side, uh, was not ideal. Um, I also know that this, the school is struggling with, um, transportation costs and, and the monies they've received from the state for such are not, uh, what they'd expected. But there's also a proposal including the creation of new positions, um, as well as some other operating expenses. So I wanted to make sure that the board was fully aware that that was being presented. That was presented tonight at the, um, school committee meeting. I believe they will be voting, as it says on the last slide, at the March 1st meeting. I am going to be talking to the finance board to see whether or not they would like to write a letter to, uh, the school committee expressing some of their concerns based upon our local revenue numbers and what we are able to accommodate and afford. But this is just an opportunity for the board to take a look and have that conversation.
Okay. Do you know when the, uh, school is going to vote the budget?
It's March 1st.
March 1st, thank you.
So.
Yeah, I know you were at the meeting tonight.
Right, yeah, so, and again, I've, I've gone through some of this packet, I won't pretend to have memorized all of the statistics in here. But, and, you know, statistics are great, um, but they can also be used for different reasons, you know? And, um, they're very focused on the spending per student being less than, Triton being less than other towns, some other towns, um, chosen. And, and they're concerned, you know, that their education is, uh, slipping because they're not spending enough, because they need to bring in more teachers, um, but, you know, they have a closer $50 million budget. So when they talk about a 10% increase and spread that to us, it, it's crippling. So when they say they have a 6% increase and they put our 37 to 38% share on us, for us, that's like 9%. And I said that to, I made a statement, I said, this is just me not speaking for my board, but I'm saying that this is very concerning because it's an assessment and an assessment gets voted up or down, if I'm not mistaken. Therefore, we need to know before the town meeting whether or not there's a general override that passed to fund all the money that's on the warrant. Otherwise, you'd be foolish to vote a town budget and wait to see what happens. It would have to be a general override. This, you know, we're kind of boxed in here, and I said that, it's, it's very boxed in and very little time, and I asked them to work on this budget some more, I'm hopeful that they will, they are, they are adding a lot of positions. They're adding custodians because they said that's part of the, their agreement for, for the new building project to keep up with cleaning the buildings. They're adding people for curriculum, they're adding, um, several other, um, curriculum and instructional and special education positions. And yes, the big deal buster was they went out to bid on transportation and, and came back with a large increase. So the, you know, they're struggling too, but the percentage of struggle for them, they have more leeway, I believe, than we do, is my personal opinion, because our budget's so much smaller to work with. So I do think that the board should send a letter on, as a response to the, um, proposed assessments. Have you, have you seen them? The proposed assessments?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, usually we can, we can fit in, you know, what, 300 to 500,000 maybe increase of, this is 900, I believe, 800, 900,000 dollars additional money.
The whole increase is about. Yeah. Oh, Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, they have here that they want to increase the, uh, school budget, uh, from a projected fiscal year 20, of 40,736,000 over a, what, three-year period of fiscal year 23 to 49,945,000. They want to go up $9 million in three years. This is the third year of a pandemic. I don't know if the school committee and the superintendent are aware that not everyone got direct deposit over the last three years. I have clients that are going to file bankruptcy, there's people that are on fixed income. Yeah, senior citizens got a 5.9% caller on social security, but it doesn't keep up with 8, 9, 10% in inflation. So I urge the school committee and the superintendent to use extreme caution and have absolute respect for the taxpayers of this district, because they can't afford a $9 million increase over three years. Okay? The other thing that irks me about this is we just got a, you know, we got a new high school, 7 through 12, 140 million dollars or so, right? Was any of this presented to us when they were pushing for the, the high school? Did they say we would need a prop two and a half override down the road? They were going to add more teachers, they were going to add more custodians, they were going to, you know? If you want to improve the school and the education, I've said it all along, you got to buy some books. In about 12 years in the public school system, preschool to 11th grade, my triplets in the 11th grade right now, juniors, I've seen about two textbooks, buy some books, okay? They don't need to spend $9 million to my, educate my kids. I don't see any difference in the whole 11 years my kids have been in the district. It just, when they spend more money, it doesn't matter, it doesn't percolate up or down to the kids. I think it's an increase in payroll, salaries, benefits, and pensions. And they got to stop it, and the timing, it couldn't be worse than it is right now, third year of a pandemic. So don't do it, school committee members, and I'm going to, I'm going to go out on a limb here and say, listen, the people are going to turn on them if they do this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. So, uh, anybody else got any comments? Bill, you had something?
Yeah, basically, I'm not as, won't be as passionate as, uh, Dan here, but, you know, 4.6%, 6.45, 6.5, these, these are absolutely unsustainable numbers, uh, growth numbers. You know, we, we're bound by law, we can only increase the budget by so much. I don't understand how the school district can look at that number that all the towns are bound by law to increase and then double or triple that number and think it's just okay. I get costs are going up, but guys, there's got to be a way to corral this because it is literally unsustainable. Uh, I don't see it two and a half override passing, which means severe, severe cuts all across the budget. There's no other way. So something has to give, i- it's just that simple. The, the, the growth, as Selectman McDonnell alluded to, to go from 40,700,000 to 49,900,000 in just three years, I, 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 I don't know how, I don't understand the logic behind the ability to believe that that's in any way affordable or sustainable over the long haul.
So.
I'm a big proponent of education, but, I mean, something's, something's got to give, something just has to give.
Right.
Kathy?
Yes, I did say that, I said, you know, we have limited resources, and what I asked for, and that's why I thought if the board wanted to vote to send a letter, that we want to begin a dialogue, um, about the school budget and our ability to, to, uh, to fund it. I mean, we want to be able to fund our share, but we, we don't want to shut down our town to do that. And, um, chairwoman of the finance board followed me and said the exact same things, that, you know, we want to support our district, but we don't want to have to shut down our town to do it. So we need, um, dialogue and we need work in that this is coming, I feel kind of blindsided, this is coming too fast to be able to resolve. This year, they should pull it back, is what I personally told them. I said, appreciate if you'd take it back to the drawing boards for this year and start an open discussion as we look forward because, um, I understand they're facing like transportation problem, costs and all of that, but they do, they are aware of how much we can afford, they understand that. And they also do understand that two out of three towns can vote through a budget. So it's different from the building project, it doesn't need a three and three. So I think the Merrimack Board of Selectmen sent a letter, I, I feel that we should get out in front of this and send a letter of concern. I mean, rather than just sit here, we should voice our concerns and tell them we want some, some meetings about this.
Jason?
Yeah, I agree, I mean, it's totally unsustainable. I mean, a 22.1% increase over three years is absolutely insane.
Well.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Where, where do, where do our three school members stand on this? Are they in favor of it?
I don't know.
Can we find out?
Yeah, good idea.
I mean, because, because they're the ones that are going to vote on it, they can stop it, we can't.
They don't have the weighted votes to stop it.
No. Is Merrimack in favor of this?
I don't know.
Well, we need to find out, we need to be on the phone with these people.
The, the, the letter, please, the letter.
We have to go to the meeting.
We have to set up meetings, we have to have dialogue.
It, uh, we, we should, uh, it's not a bad idea to send a letter, sharpen a pencil many times. But I, I, I feel bad for the poor, uh, people on a fixed income. They, they don't have any children in the school system, they're on a fixed income. The, the taxes just went up for the average house this, this last, uh, round with the new school, uh, about $800, average. Might even be, even been a little more than that. I don't know how much the people can keep on, uh, paying. It, it's, especially these people that are living, basically just on social security, they, they, they can't. It, it's, it's impossible. And, uh, I, I do think that, uh, someone would make a motion that we send a letter to the school committee and, uh, tell them that we, uh, we haven't got the resources. And, uh, you're looking for 6.5 projected in, in 23, so that means that, that the town side of the budget is going to have to come in a lot lower than what, uh.
I believe it's more than 6.5, I believe that, if you take out the debt exclusion for us, it's more like a 9% increase. I think that number they have is, is not the real number for us. Ours is like a 9% request, and we are paying above the state mandated minimum, just to be clear, and our enrollment has gone down.
It, um, I, I, I agree with Dan that we should, uh, uh, get some feedback from West Newbury and from Merrimack and see what their feeling is. And maybe if some people in the general public go down to the school committee meeting and voice their concerns that, uh, this is, this is way too high. You know, uh, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Groveland Board of Selectmen send a letter to, um, the Penn Tucket Regional School District, copy the Groveland School Committee members and with the language that we are strongly opposed to the unsustainable increases, year-over-year increases, and that we wish to begin a dialogue to address these increases ASAP.
Okay, you heard the motion?
I'll second that.
Yep, good.
Uh, Jason, well, that was a second?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Bill.
Who's going to draft it?
I can draft it.
You want?
If you'd like me to, I can do that.
If you want to draft it and then, um, send everybody a note that, uh, you have it ready, they can come in and, and read it and, and see if they approve it and sign it.
I mean, a word document, I can, it's fine, too.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any, anybody else? None, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next, we only got a couple more. Allocation. Allocation and approval of cable access television resource spending.
Yeah, I think, I think I asked for that, um.
Yeah, you did.
I did, yes, so all I, all I said, I know, and I know Tracy Guilford years ago, when he sat before us, he and I talked about this one afternoon when we were working on the budget for the Comcast contract, that there should be a budget, you know, for the cable, the running of our cable access. And, um, I think we can set the budget without a town meeting, I believe, by just getting an idea. We put something into that Comcast contract that reflected a budget of some form. And now that we have a day-to-day administrator, I would say we should just vote the overall budget and let the administrator administrate the cable. I mean, direct it, and if we need to hire more people or advertise, I'll leave it up to, to you. I mean, we don't need to do all that anymore, and we shouldn't be, we're supposed to be, we have big. We're supposed to be, we have bigger, bigger things to focus on. So I would like to see us just kind of get a ballpark idea of what the cable budget for the year is and overall, how much are we allocating to filming of things? And then let our town administrator direct it.
Anybody else?
I mean, it makes sense to me. That's why we made the position.
It, yeah, you should get, probably get together with, with Chris, maybe even Jason, and come up with a budget. You did?
I, I haven't. I, I asked for them to put together more of a department setup with a mission statement, goals, inventory, supplies, and things of that nature. And we've been working to get that together. But I, I don't believe, I don't know, I'd have to double check with Chris if he actually put together a budget.
It shouldn't be that difficult.
I, I wouldn't think so.
He did sum it up a few years ago for the contract, Chairman. And we gave...
Yeah, we're still, still waiting on the contract.
Yeah, but I mean, it's in that, if you can find the contract, the inventory list was in it. Because we had to provide that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think we asked that be added in, out of the CATV money for, like, some kind of a room rental for the, you know, uses town heat, air conditioning.
You're right. We did.
Yeah, yeah. Will you, can you wait till I'm done?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just remembered it.
And we, we, they use lights, they use the heat, they use the air conditioner. And there should be something, and I know we had discussed it before, about an item in there for reimbursement, so, so, for the, to the town. And there's, there's money available for that. Kathy, you had something?
No, I'm glad you remembered that. It's, it's all in that contract, if you can find it. If you can't, let me know. I'll dig out where, mine's probably buried under a pile of stuff.
I'll take a look.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think I need to vote. Next, Board of Selectmen Policies and Procedures. Discuss board policies for the Board of Selectmen.
Look at Dan's face.
Kathy, I think you asked to have this put on.
Yes, yes, I have. I just, I don't like to belabor the point, but most boards, big boards, important boards, like school boards and boards of selectmen, do have operating policies that they've agreed on. And when you look through the records for the Board of Selectmen, I'm not sure if anybody's even aware about the policy we have about going to other meetings. It's pretty, pretty complicated if you read it. So I, I'd like to see us try to attempt to create some kind of a manual that's specific to our board. And whether we do that in our meetings, or whether you want, someone wants to work with me outside of meetings and do a subquorum and then bring forward things that make sense. I think there should be something so that as we get new members and people leave, there's some consistency in, in how we do our meetings. You know, we have an agenda, have the agenda close on a certain day, have it, everybody get their packet, all things being equal, internet working by a certain day. These are typical operating norms for boards. The Roberts rules that we say we follow, we don't follow all the time. But when we have a big issue, perhaps, we should follow a more formal thing. I mean, I get it when we're having casual conversation and it works. But if we have people here on a big issue, that's when I see the school committee pull out the Roberts rules and say, three minutes to each person, you know, go around the table once, get your comment in, and then you get one more chance to comment, then the issue's closed. Those kind of things help make a board more efficient. So I'm just, we always end up at nine at night, so I don't want to keep everybody out on this. But I feel that we got to get started on it. And I don't think it should be just me doing it by myself. How do you want to do it?
Jason, you had a comment?
Yeah, I agree. The structure, I think, is great. And I volunteer to work with her and get it done.
Thank you.
Okay.
Beat me to the punch, dude.
You had something, Bill?
No, I, we, three of us can't work on it without violating open meeting law. I was going to volunteer to, to help. But thank you, Jason, for stepping up to the plate. It's always nice to see somebody step up to the plate.
Okay. They'll work on that. Next, town administrator time. Rebecca, you, you have anything?
Yep. I didn't, I don't have much. I just wanted to update the board on two items. One, to let the board know that the fire department was successful in receiving another grant for $7,000 for education of children and seniors. So we're very happy that they were able to get that grant. And then, second, to just let you know that you had asked me to follow up with Bill Hewig over at KP Law on a couple of items. So he did get me the special act, as you saw this evening. I did ask him about specifically the bylaw, the town administrator bylaw, and whether or not KP Law actually reviewed it, as Joe Demore had, had mentioned in one of his correspondence letters. It turns out that, that KP Law did not make any edits or changes or corrections. They did see a copy of the town administrator bylaw as presented by the government study committee, but they, they did not alter it or draft or change anything that was submitted. They had only been working on the special act as submitted this evening. I also followed up with him on the Comcast contract, so he is going to get me some information. I guess they had reached back out to Comcast and they had not heard back. Chris LaCory actually just texted me, so we're going to follow up with Bill and hopefully get that squared away. And then, I don't know, I think that's, yeah, I think that covers everything.
Last question, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, sure.
On the legal matter.
Go ahead.
There was a complaint filed last year. Warrant, they thought, like, Brian was going to ask Bill or something. He was waiting for him to come back or something. Wasn't he going to ask about how we were going to proceed or not proceed on that complaint that was filed?
A complaint that was filed?
That was a complaint. Are we supposed to do something?
I, I know that there was no, I don't believe there was any official complaint filed. I believe that's where we were getting an opinion from counsel.
Yes, there was.
I can follow up again and see whether or not, that, that was with Brian Mason, not with Bill Hewig. But I'll, I'll reach out again to Brian and ask him whether or not action needs to be taken on a, on, on a letter instead of an official complaint. Yes.
Yes, there was an official complaint because Bill Hewig, when he got back to me, he said it should be considered as an official complaint.
Okay. Then I'll have to get Bill and Brian on the phone.
What's the complaint? Who's...
So...
Is this a secret?
I don't, well, I think it was...
Must be.
You and, you and Kathy. But are we supposed to...
Yeah, that's, that should be, that should be in a, in an executive session.
Executive session.
I'm sorry, is, you have anything else?
Nope, that's it.
That was quick.
Yep.
Selectmen's time and reports. Dan, you got anything?
I'm just upset about the Pennsylbrook budget. It's a tough one. I just, I don't know if it's all coming time if I can ask procedurally. If the school committee votes for it, are we stuck with it? And then, and then we have to go to town meeting and either approve the override, or we have to cut police, fire, and everyone else in the building? We're stuck with it. So the power is in the hands of the school committee members entirely?
Currently. So the only way that it would be, if, if the, the school committee vote in favor of the budget as proposed, it will go before the towns to vote for the amount as they have proposed. So the only way that they would have to go back to the drawing board, it is if we did not move forward with an, either drastic cuts, well, an underwrite. I mean, do you mean override?
So let's just say Merrimack and Groveland say, no, we're not going to pay $9 million bucks or even whatever our cut is for this year, and then...
They have to adjust their budget.
They would, would force them.
Yep, but if we say...
So the voters of each town will have the final say.
Yes.
And if Merrimack collectively and West Newbury vote for it, then we get the bill.
We have to, yes.
And we could either pay it, or we're going to have to go back to the drawing board on our RMT bus and start cutting out $900,000 or a million bucks, which would be what, 5% of our budget?
It would be impossible.
It would be impossible. So it...
You'd be eliminating positions.
Yeah, we'd be laying off people and droves.
Yes, the revenue is not ideal this budget season. It is very low.
So it's imperative that people know that the school committee needs to talk about this and not just impose it on people. That's all.
Thank you. Bill, you got anything?
Yeah. Good news on the Pennsylbrook school front. The middle high school is nearing 70% completion. And contingency, we've only eaten through about 31% of our contingency so far. Building is coming along on time and on budget. And there are no major obstacles in the way. We did have a little issue with some trees, some plantings, but I, that believe that's being ironed out now with some of the conservation committees and, and the architectures and the landscapers. And the other thing, with all the snow, the thawing, freezing, the thawing, the freezing, the freezing, the thawing, it's just beating the ever-loving snot out of the roads. Do we have a pothole hotline, or can we establish one on a website where people can report, you know, seismic craters like the Sea of Tranquility, so they can get patched before they rip up the tie rods and the mufflers and everything else in their cars and dent rims?
They can now.
Because they, they are everywhere right now, and they're deep. And the biggest problem is when they fill up with water, you can't see them until you're in them.
We are definitely with the ability to, to move forward with the website. We will be able to get that feature up online. And we will be able to start collecting the data that way. And then it will be a matter of working with the highway department to see what materials and resources we have available to accommodate and prioritize.
Awesome. Can we maybe even throw it up on the, on the board, you know, pot light, pothole, you know, hotline?
We can.
Awesome. I'm good.
Kathy, you got anything?
Yes. So we have a student from Groveland. He's a senior at the high school, Spencer Megan. I hope I'm saying his name properly. He's one of just five trumpet players who has been chosen to play for the Allstate Jazz Band. It's a huge, huge honor and very difficult to achieve. And he's one of our own. And I think it's a proud moment for our town when any one of our students achieves such a high honor. So he's extraordinarily talented. And it'll be interesting to see where this young man goes after high school.
Well, thank you. Jason?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Rebecca stated last week and thank the highway department for the incredible job and the amount of time they take to take care of the roads and the sidewalks.
I'll echo those comments. And I, other than that, I don't have anything. Older unfinished business. I don't believe there's anything there. Unless anybody come up with anything. Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting. I don't think there's anything there either. Correspondence, we didn't have any. Next up would be adjournment. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 9:07 PM.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
You, you second it?
Second.
Second. Motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. We're adjourned. Thank you, Jason, for coming down and helping us out. Mike, I knew you were about done when you put...